Joyous New Year. With that, we will call the meeting to order. The first time we attend is the educational showcase in recognition of the Lady Raiders best volleyball team. Good evening. I would like to recognize the Lady Raiders volleyball team for the exceptional job they've done this past year, and hopefully will continue on the tradition of more wins.
Absolutely.
And we'd like to also read a proclamation. We resolve recognizing FMCC Lady Raiders volleyball. Montgomery Community College Lady Raiders volleyball team. The FMCC Lady Raiders volleyball team has demonstrated success with a 86-13 record over the past four years, which includes Mountain Valley Conference Championships each year and the NJCAA District A and Regional JJ Championships in 2022, 2023, and 2024, as well as three consecutive appearances in the NJCAA National Tournament. Whereas, the FMCC Lady Raiders see further recognition with players receiving Mountain Valley Conference and NJCAA Regional Honors. And Coach Tina Euler, honored as Conference Coach of the Year. Be it by the Board of Trustees, the Montgomery Community College that hereby commends to the Lady Raiders volleyball team for their success in the Mountain Valley Conference and the NJCAA Regional JJ and the Nationals. This 19th day of December in the year 2024, and it's signed by Dr. Chuck Millar and myself as the Chair of the Board of Trustees.
So the coaches decided they just want to make this an annual appearance.
Well, we like spending the college money.
We'd like to thank you.
Thank you. And in addition, Coach notched over 100 wins this year, so congratulations.
Thank you. So we do have like nine players from small team, Martiners, but we have some people that are sick and some that are working. And one of our guys actually gets surgery like two weeks ago, so coming in through himself. Now that everybody can make it spike, so thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate it, everybody. Thank you so much.
Hold on. You have money to take a picture, so then you can leave a link to me.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, Ed, you should look at it. There we go. One, two.
Perfect. Thank you. Thanks. So I have three. So Reese Agon, one of our freshmen, and Javlin Richard-Matre, also one of our freshmen.
In sneakers.
They've all done very well this year.
I'll stay right back there.
That's the plan. Absolutely. They have the talent to do that, so we can start the season off again right this year.
You got your marching orders.
We were just talking about working out on the end. So I hope everybody has a very, very good Christmas and a good New Year this year.
See you. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move on. Any public comments or meeting comments tonight? Hearing done, we'll move on to approval of events of the informational meeting of November 21st. I have motion to approve. Motion by time A second. Any discussion? If not, all votes in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing done, motion passed. We'll move on to reports. I have nothing as far as the Chair of events to wish everyone a Happy New Years and Merry Christmas. And with that, I will move on to the President's Report. Dr. Chuck Millar?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we had a meeting with the Chancellor this week, the President's meeting. A few things I wanted to just share with the board from that event. So this is, we're moving once again into budget advocacy season, and as New York State crafts its budget for the coming year, the State University has paired its ask. As just some general background, the SUNY Finance Office and the Chancellor Senior Staff meets with New York State Office of Budget ahead of time. They try to get a sense of where New York State is and where they're going. So it's just sort of a background of where New York State is projecting it's going to be for the upcoming budget year. They're projecting about a $5.3 billion deficit for the budget year, which would leave their reserves at about $44 billion. In the out years, you know, they're looking, again, of course, every year, I think they make a game out of under projecting their revenue so that they can tell us what a bad situation they're in, and this is no exception. So they're looking at, you know, a $16 billion deficit the next year and a further $10 billion deficit, bringing their reserves down if everything played out like that to about $17 billion. So what does that mean for us? You know, the initial feedback that the State University has received is that they're looking to continue to invest or at least keep the State University in a somewhat stable financial situation, which is, I guess, reassuring. More specifically, the board, the SUNY Board of Trustees met earlier this week, and they essentially codified what their asks are going to be. I put both up here. What we are obviously most interested in is the community college section, but they are, you know, I've got for your reference what they're looking for for the state-operated campuses and what they're looking for for us. And essentially, for community colleges, it's two things. It's maintaining that 100% floor that they set a few years ago, which is not codified in law. So if it doesn't make it into the budget legislation, we would refer to the formula that is in law, which is based on FTE. And according to SUNY's projections for the system overall, that would be about a $75 million loss for community colleges if that funding formula wasn't maintained in budget legislation. They're also asking for a $30 million investment for high-demand fields, and those are listed there, so things like healthcare, semiconductors, et cetera. They're putting together an ask where 30 million would be essentially divvied up among the community colleges to support specific programming. It's a strategy they've employed the last several years. You know, it's progressively gone down, the amount that they've asked for. We were at a high of, you know, 75 million a couple of years ago, and then it's kind of peeled off to this is sort of maintaining what they perceived last year, which then translated into $8 million for community colleges. Then, again, they dictated to us how that money could be spent, and it was really divided up between healthcare and mental health programming. So see how that plays out. In terms of capital, again, this is an area where the state has historically been pretty supportive for both state-operated campuses and community colleges, primarily because it's bonded dollars. It's, you know, it's not tax revenue per se, but it's money that they bond. And they are supporting, once again, those community college projects that have local-sponsored matches associated with them. We've talked about that. Our projects are in with the state right now, queued up along with everyone else's, and hope that they'll make it through. They typically make it through the budget negotiations, but every year is a new year, and we hope that that hits again this year. So specific programming that they're asking money for that wouldn't, you know, that isn't just general funds, but the Chancellor likes very much this ASAP ACE program. And so he's asked the Governor to include $20 million into this program. They're looking to expand the number of undergraduate engineering degrees, and they've asked for $5 million to do that. A program that we have benefited from this year and that they're looking to expand is the Empire State Service Corps. They've asked for some additional funds to double the size of that. They've asked for additional funding to expand the EOP program. We are an EOP campus. This year, we're able to expand in spring as well, which is the first year for students to do that. Yep. So they've asked for additional funding for that. The Chancellor is also very interested in higher education and prison programs, and he's asked for some additional support for that. And then the last one is really a specific program for SUNY ESF and Syracuse. Not going to talk a lot about this, and part of the SUNY ask is always for the hospitals that the State University is affiliated with, and that actually gives a lot of money, so they're asking for continued support for that. And then these are the legislative priorities the SUNY Board of Trustees has established for this year, and that is, you know, trying to streamline tap the allocation and align the definitions between the federal definitions for income and the state tuition assistance program income definitions. They're looking to increase the tax credits that are available for donations to the SUNY Impact Foundation. They're also asking for some expanded, or they're calling it evolve, evolving the thinking around bonded capital. A lot of our purchasing related to IT is very specific in what we can use bonded dollars for because they want those assets to have longevity. So historically, if we were purchasing software, that's not something that we could use capital dollars for, even though, you know, some of these software purchases are, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not multimillion dollars, if you're talking about something like implementing a student information system. You know, the last time we did that, it was somewhere north of $1.5 million, and we were able to, the foundation at that time contributed quite a significant amount to that. But we weren't able to tap into bonded dollars from the state for those projects. They're asking the state to consider changing definitions because those things can be as costly as hard work. They're also looking to get the legislature and the Governor to rally around providing some additional funding for collaboration initiatives. Whether, the example of these, those IT services, we take advantage of collaborative IT service with SUNY ITech, which is sort of a... It's associated with SUNY loosely, but they're looking to build out more of these things. They've got an initiative on financial aid that they're looking to stand up, and they're asking for some additional support for that, which I, you know, I'm wholeheartedly in favor of those sorts of things because especially personal goodness like us, if we can pass it into some of these collaborative efforts, it gives us access to resources we just don't have now. And then they're also, you know, sort of related to this is they're asking for some practical adjustments in procurement law. That's probably not going to happen because the Controller has very strong opinions about that. He's not inclined to view favorably these sorts of changes. But, you know, there's just some thresholds, and there's some procurement. It impacts, quite honestly, state-operated campuses more than it does us, but to a certain extent, it does impact us as well. So they're going to see if they can get some meaningful change around that, although we're told not to get our hopes up. The other topic that was specific to community colleges that we discussed at the President's meeting was this concept of success metrics. So historically, community colleges, four-year institutions have been measured, if you will, on these ideas of, you know, success is aggressive. And we know, we've talked about this here, we've had these discussions for as long as I've been involved with community colleges, that, you know, graduation isn't necessarily the measure of success for a student here. Our students come to us and travel through us for a variety of different reasons. And so, you know, when it comes to, you know, whether it's an accrediting agency or the federal government or, you know, some other entity putting up a scorecard, if you will, to compare institutions, and they use these measurements, it doesn't necessarily help state the case for the community college. So SUNY is looking for alternatives. About a few years back, and those of you who've been on the board for a while will remember, we talked about the voluntary framework for assessment that the American Association of Community Colleges put together, and we participated in that for a while. That's going away. In fact, I think this year is the last year that attempted to do something similar where it didn't just look at, you know, the students who graduated with 150% of the time. It really tried to capture how we were really serving students. And so they came across a model, and this slide talks about those sort of traditional measurements that, you know, you're talking about first-time full-time students. You're looking at 150% of time from that first time, and then the fact that you started and finished at the same institution as opposed to, you know, receiving a degree in another institution or transferring and getting a bachelor's degree. You know, you don't necessarily get credit under the traditional measures. So when they looked at SUNY's data using those traditional measures, they, you know, they came up from... They came up with their own idea of how we might change this and boost those completion rates from 29.1 to 44.1. So in doing, in their own sort of brainstorming, they looked at persistence through six years. That gives you, you know, a bonus. And the reason that you would extend that timeframe is many students who attend community colleges are part-time. So it's not even fair to judge them on the traditional rate of three years, even though you're a two-year program. You know, Pat can tell you as an advisor, he's got people who've been here for long enough that they're going to have two doctor degrees. We have, and so then, you know, I alluded to this earlier, earning a bachelor's degree after you transfer, you know, again, within a certain period of time, or completing at a different community college. So when you do that, you certainly get a better picture of what we do. But then they looked at, in Virginia, the Fed, the Richmond Fed, I'm not sure why they got involved, the Reserve Bank of Richmond, but they did. And they've come up with this new set of metrics that they're looking to partner with other states to measure. And so they're looking at things like, you know, certainly where you awarded a degree. That's the, over on the left is the traditional sort of, you know, credential that they're looking at. But then they're tacking on these other things like workforce recognized credentials, transfer to a four-year institution, or just remaining enrolled so for a longer period of time. So it's a lot of the same sorts of things. They're also bringing in part-time students where traditionally we've only focused on full-time students. And if those measures, and when I say we, that's just the federal metrics which other entities use as well. Full-time students, first-time full-time students in a fall semester, and then tracking them over time, and typically just that three years for an associate's degree or 150% of the time. The Fed's, you know, again, Richmond Fed has expanded these types of things. And when they do that, you see the measures expanding out. The color coding isn't showing up on that. I guess it's the light. So the dark blue circles are using the Richmond Fed methodology, the light blue or the traditional. And what you see is it pushes the success metrics much higher and paints a rosier picture. And, you know, it's one of those things you can make the argument that you're just using different statistics, but because we're measured and people... There are these scorecards, and the Federal Department of Education puts out a scorecard every year that uses those traditional measurements. It doesn't look so good. And when you're in a point where you're thinking about investing your money in education, but then you look at these metrics and you say, oh, well, they only have a, you know, 20% success rate or a 30% success rate, it matters. And when we have, you know, the perceptions that we have of higher education today, you know, we are looking for ways to tell our story a little differently. So this graphic just, again, shows that using these expanded definitions, and it does make it appear that we're doing a better job than might otherwise say. So they're going to continue to talk to us about this. They're going to look at what we can do. They're not trying to create an additional data burden for us, so they're trying to, you know, determine how easily we can measure these things. The Richmond Fed has agreed to partner with us at no cost, which is, you know, I don't know if that's forever, but certainly initially. And they're going to look to implement these things in the spring. So, you know, nothing that has an immediate implication for us, but it is an effort that the State University is taking on behalf of, instead of just saying to us, which is what we've heard the last couple of years, you guys just need to do a better job. They're looking to help us, obviously, in ways that, you know, even they are acknowledging, yeah, you guys are doing a better job than we give you credit for, and then we shouldn't just continue to use those same old definitions we said metrics to tell the same story. So that is those are the highlights from our President's meeting. And I am happy to answer any questions that you may have about any of that or anything else that's on the line.
Any else have anything for Dr. Chuck Millar? None. We'll move on to the College Assembly before.
That report is in your packet. Steve Hemsworth is the Chair of the Assembly, and he is unable to be with us this evening. So again, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have from that written report.
If there's no questions, we'll move on to the Student Trustee Report. Trustee Cole?
No report.
No report. Okay. With that, we'll move on to the Foundation. We'd love to trust you guys.
Thank you. Hope field moving forward. And Phase One in UC for only soccer field. Phase Two is softball and baseball. Phase Three, they haven't decided what they're going to need, and they must think about it in the future. Foundation, given Tuesday, an annual update will be designated for this project unless the donor has different plans and have any objection. The message for this is investing in the future of FMCC activity. And 100% of the foundation expect that our board participate in this effort. Annual update, and 100% that all the donation would be matched with the state. The contract has been signed to perform a complete Toprak survey and by Jacob Lance Surveying and other, they can Kenny Geo-Geotechnology. Hey, not technical, I'm sorry. Technical Engineering Service. And they are providing with the oral logs, laboratory testing results, and analysis of subservice condition. Perla Gallery, they are showing the art from the artist in I don't know what. His name is Bill Waiter. Waiter. Yeah, Waiter. Thank you. And this has been already stored, and it's going to continue until February 21st, 2025. And if the last day, 21st, meaning February 21st, they have reception from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. If anybody is interested to see the exhibit, it's open between Monday to Friday from 9:00 until 4:00 p.m., only by appointment, by appointment only. There's a website, this is written in our report. You can go on the online and request to visit the gallery. And if you are interested to know about the artist, there is a website. You can go and click on it and learn about the artist. Foundation received a donation from, I can't remember, $15,000 to support purchase of a mini CR2 for the red tag, rat tag, tech rather. And this has been entirely previously donated by a generation, generosity. I passed the Johnston Hospital Foundation for $30,000 in addition funding from the Kemp Foundation. And I conclude my report, and if there's no question from me or Mrs. Lancy.
Hey, any questions? None. Thank you. Trustee Gashi, we'll move on to committee reports. Finances Committee, trustee Beck.
Well, I'll spare you reading the 19 pages that you always see, which I've very few of them in detail. It was a lengthy financial response, and the beginning of it, as Chester always gives us the overview. I don't think there was anything that was glaring that we need to discuss or be concerned about. So basically, Mr. Chair, that's my report.
Thank you. Any questions for trustee Beck? With that, we'll move on to building some grounds with trustee Nigel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to point out one thing in support. 2025 capital projects, 2025 projects have been approved by both counties and submitted to the SUNY Office of Capital Facilities for the inclusion in the next New York State budget. Projects include upgrades to the large gym, athletic fields, as well as Phase Two. It includes already, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, trustee Nigel. Any questions for trustee Nigel? If not, we'll move on to the Academics and Peers for trustee Preston.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just touch on a few things happening over the last month. The Human Services 212 Mental Health Services Class, they organized a panel discussion regarding the importance of mental health care and services that highlighted the mental health crisis and how to deal with that in the moment, and also provided an opportunity for local leaders and peers to learn how to connect them with services, including the 90° Suicide and Mental Health Crisis Support Line. In our nursing program, Dr. Forrest Hullett entered his disciplinary meeting for the Area Health Education Center Scholars Program on the 25th of November. Dr. Forrest held an interdisciplinary meeting for the Area Health Education Center Scholar's Program on the twenty-fifth of November. They had seven students. Um, they're attempting to create an interdisciplinary group to set a national template of using this method to promote uh the Area Health Education Center Scholar's Program. It's a huge accomplishment to have so many successful recipients so early in the year, get them together from different degree programs. In community engagement, uh students had an opportunity to meet with potential employers at the New York State Society of Radiologic Sciences. There are several photographs um within the packet that we got there. And during that conference, Colin Bailey was sworn in as the president of that organization. And Colin is an alumni of SUNY FMCC in twenty-fourteen. So congratulations to him. And in the alumni spotlight, Ella Fountain came and took professional headshots of students uh on campus as part of the project for next semester, for those students to build a professional social media presentation on LinkedIn. And finally, uh you all have in your position of motion, um that I will read, uh make that as a form of look in background in an ongoing assessment of efforts to reduce academic program offerings at the college. The faculty and the administration determined that provisions are necessary in the Electrical Technology AAS program. To better reflect the nature of the program and the industry, the recommendation is made to change the name from Electrical Technology AAS to Robotics and Systems Technologies AAS. Recommendation, the president recommends that the board of trustees approve the proposed title revision from Electrical Technology AAS to Robotics and Systems Technologies AAS. Finally in action by the board trustees, the program changes will be forwarded to SUNY and the New York State Education Department. And again, I admit that's a form of motion.
I have a motion by trustee Preston. I have a second. Second by trustee Gazi. All those in favor? I oppose, carry none, the motion pass. Thank you, trustee Preston. Any questions? If not, we'll move on to trustee uh Perry.
To report a lot of the students' success. An introduction to the opening of Reggie's Plaza, which you heard about last one. They celebrated the first generation college student day in November, recognizing students and staff who was the first of their families to attend college. And last thing, campus event called Winterfest was held December tenth with campus offices and community agencies providing a variety of fun activities. Trio, E O P, C staff, retention services, student advocacy board, the prevention council, and campus hosted Winterfest. The entire campus community participated in the events, which served as study break during the last week of classes. Students, faculty, and staff took part in mop tails, clothing drive, snow globe, and subway making, as well as watching holiday movies in the Rouse. Our report, questions, party?
If we have no questions, we're trustee Perry. Uh, we'll move on to diversity, equity, and inclusion. Yeah?
Thank you. Uh, we have the report. I just had a few noticeable things here. Food system and sustainability club, two separate clubs. Basically, it's their food drive, they have to put a rate into the food pantry. That worked out pretty well. SUNY Climate Survey is, I haven't read it yet, but you'll hear about it next time, uh after I go over it. Uh, let's see. Oh, I um don't have the right hat, but I wanted to be that holiday diversity gnome. I looked at that, so I have some calendars. And I think these clubs are put out there, they're fifteen dollars a piece. And you know, when you do diversity, you gotta be really careful about this. So I actually looked up the history of gnomes and to Norwegian. And they deliver gifts to children, they can treat them well, leave a place at the table for them. They're nice product, all right, they'd actually be nice to you with a little bit of gift, but not they'll be mischievous. They will fix everything, basically. So I don't know if that means I'll be mischievous. The other um, the other piece with this is um I just want to know, when I first got here and put together the uh building piece class, and that's got thirty-five students again, and that is really nice to see, given the status of the world at this point. And sociology and health and happiness filled up. That's first time class, and both of them focus on diversity. A really interesting thing, we're past several years, and you've heard me say non-battle communication before. They're really good students respond with them. I think you understand better than I do. When I come in there with it, uh and I've been doing it for a while, that's uh nice to see, like I said, given the uh type of community of forming, people forming here, performed over the years here. And people are taking it out and practicing it, and it's a little bit people around me. I think it's a real benefit to all of us. One final thing, this year, Christmas, Hanza, and Hanukkah fall on the same time period too, which is unusual. But I just think that came up that it figured that out. That's it. If you have any questions, feel free.
We have no questions. Thank you, John. We'll move on to accreditation. Dr. Chuck Mose.
Actually, that'll be Mr. Town.
Mr. Town?
Thank you. So uh just want to update you on the accreditation efforts underway. First thing I would do is reintroduce myself. I've actually been the accreditation officer ALO as of late September. I'm currently the co-chair of the Self-Study Steering Committee, which you are aware of. I know I've been in this room with you guys before. I'm giving you an update similar to this. I'm also the past chair of the Assessment Committee. So I think those two things that uh are mainly what have got me. I am currently the director of the Evans Library, assistant professor. But on and after January second, twenty-twenty-five, I'll be the associate dean of academic affairs, and I'll be working alongside Pat and and our lead. And be something that's gotten me into this mess. What part of that position will be to continue to work on institutional effectiveness and compliance and to continue to serve as as the ALO? So uh with that, just a couple of things uh on the next slide. Work on preparing the final self-study report continues. So seven standards in that report with some other with a with some other chapters. The standards one, two, four, and seven are nearly complete. Standards three and five will be out next uh for for review. And uh standard six will be the final chapter for for review. The report and the associated materials are due to the Middle States six weeks prior to the site visit, which will basically be the week of February twenty uh twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five. As you see, the second bullet point there, the team visit is um Sunday, April sixth through Wednesday, April ninth. So we're looking um to uh have that documentation, um start posting that documentation weeks before it's due. Uh, we'll be posting it in an online portal. We'll be looking to start that work uh weeks before February twenty-third. And um the goal is actually to have um the report complete by late January, first week in February, again, to give us plenty of time for any unforeseen um items that that may arise. Again, the site visit in in early April. And uh as we not necessarily begin to wind down, because there's still definitely some work to do in the self-study report process. We do need to start, and we have um started some initial steps to uh begin to prepare the campus for that for that fall visit. So um some of those things is just um starting to make them aware that they'll need to the campus as a whole, the campus community as a whole, will need to review that self-study report when it becomes available. It might be, um, you know, shooting for for uh late January. And familiar our, familiarize ourselves with the college, colleges' mission, vision, and goals, and how uh jobs and activities uh support those missions, the mission, the mission, and and those goals. Where we are going to do a mock visit, so give everybody a chance to kind of practice this before before the the big days in early April. Um, we're anticipating that to be in uh March twenty-twenty-five. It's suggested that you do that about four weeks before before your busy. People have enough time to to get acclimated to the type of questions that they may that may arise, but not to have it too far out to forget what you what you learned, what you were coached up on, I guess. Uh, and then the other thing that will happen, well, there will be forums during the spring semester to help the campus prepare for the fall of those visits. So um the other thing was uh last week, I was in Philadelphia for the Middle States Annual Conference and just some key takeaways up there. Some things that I'll be keeping my eye on uh moving forward. One of those things being linking assessment to accreditation and incorporating Middle States standards to the development of the next strategic plan, which is a little ways out. We're up till twenty-twenty-six. But again, thinking ahead on some of that stuff. Did attend a panel discussion with Middle States, uh some Middle States presidents, and there was a lot of talk about the incoming uh administration. And that accreditation accreditation agencies have worked um with the Trump administration and obviously in in previous years. So there is some familiarity there, but uh across the board, the four presidents on the stage said to expect some disruption. And um, you know, in regards to uh some of the things during the campaign, kind of pointed that targeted at the the Department of Education. To get rid of accreditation would take an act of progress. So um, you know, I I there's some talk, I guess, maybe of of of, you know, stopping accreditation altogether. Other things that were on their mind was stripping out the diversity, equity, and in inclusion. And uh, you know, after the affirmative action uh decision in twenty-twenty-three, the presidents seemed to feel like, you know, that's a credible threat, I think was the words that they used. So again, something to keep an eye on, but uh those presidents did make a note that um Middle States uh and their standards in the way that they're written allow um campuses, colleges to define diversity, equity, and inclusion in their own way, incorporate it in their campuses as as they seem fit. So um other possible actions that that they kind of um talked about with the incoming administration would maybe be possible action on Title Nine, gainful employment and and um financial aid or or federal aid to colleges. And um student loan forgiveness and some of the things that President Biden had either put into place or attempted to put in place with with student loan forgiveness, maybe we will give that back. And then just some other things, again, keeping my eye on moving forward, using evidence, expectations uh by standard to align with accreditation activities. We're in addition, under Edition thirteen. But with Edition fourteen, there's some specific data, some specific information that Middle States is going to want from us. And we're we're in an accreditation process, so this next one is is eight years out. Who knows if we would even be under Edition fourteen? But it's a good idea to just make sure that we're gathering this data, uh and and if we're not, you know, begin to to begin to um to um to gather that. And then finally, just I attended an ALO breakfast at the conference. And the members of the Beyond Transfer Policy advocacy board presented some um some findings from their report about accreditation and transferring. So um they were talking about eighty percent of community college students intend to get a a a four-year degree. But only about thirty-one of those students actually end up transferring, and only about sixteen percent of those students actually earn that degree within six years. And um four in ten of the respondents to a survey they had conducted had tried to um transfer some type of credits. And a lot of that transfer is in uh those attempted transfer credits are in those non-traditional uh type type credits, so things like military experience, uh work experience, things like that. So um just interesting to me, uh you know, if there may be an uh and an opportunity down the road, either from the Middle States, either, you know, to um or at very least to keep an eye on what's happening in the transfer world and how that would uh that would affect our our college. That is it. I'm I'm questions?
We have any questions? Not. Thank you, Dan. You're welcome. Thank you. Congratulations on your promotion.
Thank you.
Anything I got to say is buckle up, everybody. It's going to be a rough ride in the next seven years. Move on to uh personnel and trustee, uh Schuman McGee is not here, so I'll do it. Transfers, promotions, transgressions, designations, and retirements. Jared, Dean Majesty resigned as first effective December ten. As you know, Dan Town moves up as from director, the Evans Library to associate dean of academic affairs back to January second. And presently in the search for director of student financial services full-time, assistant dean of academic affairs full-time, librarian full-time, Mr. Parkes. With that, includes a personnel report. If there's no questions, we'll move on to policy with trustee Wilson.
I have no report tonight, so I will not link them this week.
Thank you, trustee Wilson. One final thing that I would like to thank, I believe, is he had a foundation that supplied these or?
It was a college.
A college? Oh, thank you, college, supplying these. Sure, I can send them to love it.
Really good, yeah.
And with that, I'll I'll make a motion. Is there a motion to adjourn? So move. All those in favor? I oppose, carry none. Thank you all for coming tonight and have a happy holiday.